We'll call this regular meeting of the St. Peter's School Board to order. It is June 15th, 2020, and we're doing this obviously over live stream remotely as had been our practice during this pandemic. So do I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
Dixon, I move to adopt the agenda.
Locan Skard, I'll second.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call, vote. John?
Aye. John Carlson, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Tim?
Locan Skard, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. If there are any requests to speak towards an agenda item, if that could be put in the chat, and we will try to accommodate that. Moving to the approval of consent agenda items. Does everyone have the consent agenda and has read through the items? Now, we approve several different items under the consent agenda. And if there's any specific item you want pulled out to discuss, please request that we do so, and we will do that. But if there is a, is a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tracy, Stewie.
Dixon, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any conversation, any discussion about the consent agenda?
Yeah, Ben, this is John Carlson. I did go in today to the district office, and all the books are up to date.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Treasure to Carlson. Hearing no further discussion, we do have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call, vote. Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Tim?
Locan Skard, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
John Carlson, aye.
Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries. The consent agenda approval is unanimous. Moving to action items. Consider approval of the preliminary 2020-2021 budget.
I'll just start and provide a little bit of brief background. As you are likely aware, a school board must adopt a budget for the following fiscal year prior to July 1st, which is the start of your fiscal year. So it's the practice of most school boards, including the St. Peter's School Board, to adopt a preliminary budget, knowing that, that sometimes things are a moving target and that things change. So on a regular quarterly basis, the board is updated on changes to the budget on both the revenue and expenditure side. And then you complete a revised budget generally in that April to early May timeframe. The budget is in all funds, and the budget, preliminary budget was reviewed in detail by the Finance Committee last Thursday morning, June 11th. So with that, Business Manager Regner.
Thank you, Jeff. As Dr. Olson said, we did go over it, hopefully pretty much in detail on, on the Finance Committee meetings. I'll try and be, you know, a lot shorter today. And then, but if you have any questions, make sure, you know, make sure you let me know. There should be in the packet, seven pages under the budget thing. The first page is basically just, just the cover sheet outlining what is in there. Page two is an overall of all the different funds that we have and our projected balance at the end of the year, and then our projected revenue and expenditures for the year, and then our fund balance at the end of the year on all the funds. Pages three through six are the four-year rollout, which we've, we've seen a number of times, which basically this year we're looking at would be FY '21, which would be next year, or starting in, I guess, actually about 15 days on July 1st. And then page seven is just what we use for the enrollment projections for next year, which obviously drives a lot of the rollout in the budget. Maybe if we want to just start on the top page, we'll, we'll talk about maybe the, the other, we'll come back to the general fund. We'll, we'll start with the other smaller fund balances, starting on line 55 with the food service budget. We're looking at probably a little over $300,000 as a projected carryout. And then the food service budget, you know, is projected to make a little bit of money. Usually we put the utilities and other items that we can do if we do have a profit there. So we got, we're projecting a little bit of increase during the year and carry out about three, a little over $300,000. We'll talk a little bit later on about the lunch prices tonight, and then, you know, that went in and some of the assumptions that went into that. But the food service, you know, is in pretty good shape, basically handled itself, and we'll go from there. Line 58 is the Fund 04 budget, the community service budget. We've talked about that at length. That's the one that was probably affected the most by the COVID items, as a lot of those are, you know, driven by fees and those items that we didn't have come March. So our fund balance is projected to drop, you know, in FY '20 this year, and then is projected to drop also somewhat next year. That one's, you know, the work in progress, been working with Dr. Olson and Tammy Etive pretty extensively over the last couple of weeks here to try and, you know, modify the budget and see how we can, we can get it back closer. We're hoping to hear some things that they'll, they'll help out with some of the funding for, you know, the SAC program shut down for a couple of months, you know, the adult programs, the, some of the school readiness programs. We didn't have any fee income for the last month. And there's a couple of things that we've tweaked in there to try and make it come closer to, you know, revenues and expenditures. The, the next one, line 61 through 63, is basically our Fund Six. Those are the Capital Funds Project. If you remember, we've, for the last 10 years, we've had a capital, what's called Capital Funds Project. That came to an end. That was a 10-year levy that, well, last year was a couple of years ago, we, that we levied for it. We've got a little bit of money in there, and that'll be spent up, you know, either this summer or next summer, next year. And then the bond referendum money, we're hoping to get that all paid out by June 30th, but there's a couple contractors that are still working on. So there'll be a little bit of fund balance left at the end of the year, and along with the CSP arc item. And so we'll have some activity in there next year, but hopefully in FY '21, that, those two funds will be, be used up or deleted. Line 69 is our trust fund. That's basically mostly the Anxton and Maurer Scholarship Funds that are, that are paid out, along with the Gilbertson and Rolsof Funds that we got a couple of years ago, you know, basically some interest income. And then the expenditures are a little bit higher because a couple of the funds will just pay down as, as, as we go. So that, that's kind of, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped that line number 65, the debt redemption fund. Basically, that's the payment on the, the revenue is the levy coming in, and then the payment is, or the revenue going out, or the expenditures is basically the payment going out on the bond for the new school and the other improvements done at that time. That's pretty much, you know, an all-in-all-out type deal too, depending upon the, that, or the tax collections. So that's kind of a brief summary, you know, Funds Two through Eight. Don't know if there's any questions on that, or else I'll move along to the general fund. There's a lot more items there, the bulk of the expenditures, obviously.
So, Tim, this is-
Oh, yep, Locan.
Tim, this is Tim Locan Skard. Hey, I have a question on the food service. So we're doing okay on the food service, even though for the last three months, you've pretty much not had any income coming in? I'm just curious how that works.
No, actually, the last three months, we've had just as much income or more coming in with the distribution of the meals and such, with the breakfasts and the lunches were probably, and Etive, help me out if I'm wrong here with the number, but I think about 2,000 meals total a day between lunch and breakfasts.
Yeah. So about half of those are, a little more than half are lunch, few are breakfast, which is a little bit lower reimbursement rate, but also a less cost. So Tim and I did meet with Avions today, and that program will continue as we know it right now. But yep, so we have been distributing food since March 17th, I believe was our start date, that Wednesday.
So, excuse me, Etive. So, Tim, back to your question. The reason that, that the federal government totally subsidized the program for Minnesota schools, really across the country for the breakfast and lunch. So it's really very similar to our summer food program, our summer read and feed program, where anybody under the age of 18, or 18 and under, can receive a subsidized, paid-for breakfast and lunch. And that will continue through, Etive, through August 30th, I believe.
Yes.
We actually serve a few, you know, it's with the bag lunches and things, we've served a few less, somewhat less on the lunches, but we serve more breakfast than typical during the year. So it actually balances out to the total number of meals are pretty close. So, no, it's a good question. And like I said, and all the meals are paid for by the, the government, so we don't have, we, we collect all of them. So that works out pretty well, too. Kind of jumping back to the general fund, if there's anything else, just let me know. Lines 30 through 33 are basically the, the activity funds, which we talked a little bit about. We have to move out, we move it into the general fund, but we have to assign it. So it's basically money raised by the students for the students, so it'll no longer be kind of mixed in with the, the general unassigned funds. And that, they just kind of what comes in, we project it goes out. And this will keep, this will force us to keep track of their balance in there, which is, when it's all set up, it'll be a good, a good program. Going up to lines 14 through 16, they're basically just some categorical funds that we have to spend on certain items. If we don't spend it, we're allowed to carry it over, such as medical assistance and basic skills and those type of things. So depending upon how much money was, you know, we get revenue so much in during the year, and we try and spend that out during the year to balance them out. If we don't spend that much, we carry it over, and it cannot go into the unassigned funds. Line 18 is signed for severance, is assigned for severance of the employees as they leave. We keep a balance in there in case we ever have to have a, a big year on that. Line 19 is assigned for Viva Trust, which is 10 years ago, the, 10 or 11 years ago, the school switched out the retirement funds, and we need to put aside $1,000 a year for the new teachers for their payout after 10 years. So we, we kind of accrue that, so we don't have to get that all at one time. Line 21 is assigned for the new high school operation. That one, we've talked about a little bit. That, that's the funds that we have in there that we, we saved up over time to try and operate the new school, and will help, you know, now if we have a little bit of budget shortfall. 23 is water mitigation, assigned for if we have, when, when we probably have to do something on the west side of the new school there. AAA funds were, funds that were donated to the, to the school for various parts of the AAA projects. We still get a little bit in, and we'll probably do some expenditures over next year. Funded depreciation is kind of to, to try and get a little bit of funds for things that the LTFM funds will not cover over time. The purchases that we have some funds, because there's nowhere designated for some of the capital improvements. And down the road with the new high school, some of those things will probably come start, do all at about the same time. Line 26 is the dental reserve for the dental insurance fund, which we, our insurance advisors thought we should set up this year. So we're setting a small, small one aside there in case claims are over revenues. And then also the transfer to Food Service Fund, which if we have some accounts that aren't collectible, we would need to transfer to the Food Service Fund, being a federal program. Then I guess if we go back up to basically line 10, the general fund, unassigned funds, the big one, you know, typically we try, we've tried to have a 60-day fund balance goal, which is the 4.7 million from, and this really corresponds with the rollout. And the rollout has changed very little from when we talked about it basically and approved it in May on the revised budget. So we're basically projecting at about 26 million. And this, these numbers match up with the, with the numbers on, it'd be the page four of the handout, the FY '21. You know, we're having about 27 million of revenue coming in, just short, and our expenditures are over by about $100,000. So our fund balance, and we're transferring some of that money in from that savings account. So the fund balance goes out about the same amount. With that coming in and out. That's based upon the enrollment projections. Again, you know, the big driver of, of the funds is always, I say, enrollment, enrollment, enrollment. We're basically looking at, and this is the big, you know, the big question for, for next year, where is enrollment going to be at with, with, with pandemic and everything? We're kind of based this upon a normal year, and then we're going to do some, some, you know, what ifs, if we're, if we only have X amount of kids in for certain reasons. But it's based upon kind of getting a normal kindergarten class in of 145, and then rolling everybody over to the next year that we're here at the end of the year. You know, so we do lose a few students because the graduating class is bigger than 145 from this year. So we'll be down a few students, just normally unless we have a big influx of people moving into the district. And, you know, that's, we've talked at length, that's kind of the one of the big questions of, you know, where is enrollment going to be at? This is based upon, like I said, the normal enrollment, and then we're going to do some, some what ifs if we lose, if we lose some students. But I guess kind of where I think we're, we're heading is, you know, 1920, this year, we should be okay financially. One other thing, and maybe Dr. Olson can help me out too, there are some funds coming from the CARES Act, from the federal government, that we just kind of got a little bit of word on here this last week, and the application just came out, or is not quite out yet, that we're working on. That one, you can spend that money over a couple of different years, you know, over the two years here. So, so I'm not sure exactly where it's going to fall into, you know, if it'll fall into FY '20 or FY '21 yet. But there should be some costs there to help offset some of the extra, or some revenue to help offset some of the extra costs we have, or, and/or if we do have a decline in enrollment. That's kind of one-time money. So we're, we're tracking how we spend it and some of our expenses, so we know kind of where we're going to be at.
You know, the, the amount on the CARES Act funding is in three different funds, but it totals slightly over $284,000. The, kind of the lessons learned as school districts went through the recession about 11 years ago, really you need to focus one-time money, one-time revenue on one-time expenditures. You have to be very careful not to tie one-time money into ongoing expenditures. So the priorities for that CARES Act funding are technology, summer school, and mental health. But they can be used in, in some other ways as well. But those are the primary focus areas that the, the grant will be involved with. And I, I think they're like, so here's, here's what's so difficult about this year's fiscal year 21 budget. You know, there are a lot of questions out there about enrollment, as Tim said. But then there's also, there are a lot of questions about revenue. I mean, there seems to be a strong possibility that the federal government will come out with another incentive package of some kind. So, you know, that, or, or funding package. So that's going to be interesting to see how that all rolls out. And those are unknowns. And, and I think that's why the determination was to present the, or less traditional budget system, but understanding that there will need to be some budget exercises to plan for other outcomes.
Yeah, and depending upon what the, you know, I guess the model is in the fall, there may be extra transportation costs, extra training costs, you know, a lot of different things. So that's one of the reasons we didn't put the CARES money in either, because we know we might have some extra expenses there. So hopefully that'll offset some of those in the long run. So that, that's kind of a, you know, a brief synopsis of a pretty complicated document. With that, you know, I guess it's, like I said, we, the school district needs to pass it so we can spend money after July 1st. You know, this year is probably, since I've been here, obviously the biggest, I'll say, question mark or what ifs is, is going to, there's, there's a lot of questions out there. You know, we'll start to get a bigger, better handle on it as we get closer to, you know, the end of July, when the, the MDA gives us more guidance on what, what fall will look like. And then, you know, August and, and those things, we'll get a better handle on enrollments. So I'm sure we'll be updating the, the rollout as we go along, especially on that. And then, you know, a couple of the, the minor funds or smaller funds, as far as the food service and the comm ad will probably change as we go too, depending upon what, what is decided upon or what happens.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Dr. Olson. We did have a Finance Committee meeting last week and, and met about this in length and wanted to forward this to the entire board. Do we have a, a motion and a second to approve the preliminary budget?
This is John Carlson, so moved.
Bill Soderland, second.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call, vote. Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Tim?
Locan Skard, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Sorry, sorry.
That's okay. Sorry, just to be clear, I muted you out there. You, you voted aye?
Yes.
Excellent. Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
John?
John Carlson, aye.
Ben Leonard, aye. The preliminary 2020-21 budget is adopted unanimously. All right, thank you. We will go to action item number two. Consider approval of yearly governmental lease.
You've used the yearly governmental lease to purchase technology across the district, both for the one-to-one initiative and also for other hardware, and for technology for many, many years. And you, we put this out to try to receive the best bid possible for that lease. And I'll let Tim explain that. And if you have any specific questions about the technology being purchased, you can ask a question and Chris will respond to that. So, Tim?
There should be a document before you, kind of outlining the, the amount of the bids and the bids that we received this year. We did put it out to all four of the banks in town. Two of them were unable to bid at this time with, with other things going on. We did receive a proposal, I guess, from First National Bank and from Hometown Bank. Basically, we, we put out two different things, our, our two different types of leases. The one is for the one-to-one initiative, and the others for the other just general technology needs of the school district. We try and get the one-to-one paid back on a four-year basis as they come into ninth grade. So by the time they leave as a senior, that's paid off. And the other technology is set up on a five years, because that's, and Chris can maybe help me out if I'm wrong here, but a lot of those items are on a five-year rotation. So then they get paid off when their, their useful life is over. The total of the two leases this year was $322,000. First National Bank and Hometown Bank both put in leases, and I'm always amazed, they, they, the local banks have always been, been really good to work with. This year, the, the two bids that came in were 10 basis points apart, with First National Bank being just a little bit lower, at 2.15 and 2.25. So I guess the recommendation is to, to go with First National Bank for the lease this year. It seems like it's worked out that each, each of the banks has, has one or two of the leases as we go. So that, that's kind of works out nice, and they're, they're always been good to work with. So I guess, but this year, we, we recommend to go with First National Bank on the $322,000 on the two leases. Don't know if there's any questions. And like I said, we've, we've been doing this for a number of years, and it seemed to work out, and the cash flow now works out pretty much the same every year. The lease tends to be about the same amount.
Thank you very much, Tim. Any initial questions or discussion? Hearing none. Is, is there a motion to approve the yearly governmental lease?
Locan Skard, aye. I move we approve the yearly governmental lease with First National
Dixon, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call, vote. We'll start with John.
John Carlson, aye.
Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
Vicki?
Aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Tim?
Locan Skard, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to item number three, the consideration of approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of St. Peter Rec. and Leisure Department and St. Peter Community and Family Education. So I don't know, Tammy, if you're going to take that, or Dr. Olson?
Sure.
Tammy's going to take it.
Thanks for allowing me to share some information with you. We have a really strong partnership with the Recreation and Leisure Services Department, and this memorandum of understanding really addresses the services that each of us will provide, so that we can maximize our resources without program duplication. And both of our organizations are really committed to eliminating barriers for participation, supporting academic achievement, providing positive recreational and social opportunities for students, and also encouraging leadership. And one of the ways that we do this is by providing the Recreation Department for funds for their new exploration recreation program. This is the second year of the program, and it operates in local parks on a regular basis, and is free for children to participate. And our funds help to defray some of the costs that they have for activities and supplies for this program. Another program that we offer funds to support is the after-school youth enrichment programs that they offer. And the funds that we provide them help to reduce some of the participant fees for things like early release day activities, fencing, flag football, volleyball, and babysitter training. You know, it's really great to be able to work with an organization that shares some of the same guiding principles that we do. If you can take a look at the memorandum of understanding, you'll see that there have been no changes from the previous year. The outline of the statement of assurances for the after-school funding is the same, and the guidelines for youth programs haven't changed. Additionally, the funding amounts are also the same. This working document is really helpful for both of our organizations as we plan our programming for the year. Again, we're just so fortunate to be able to have this long relationship with the City of St. Peter. Joey Shugel and I, we work really well together, and we really have a shared goal of providing the best services that we can for the children and youth in our community. Do any of you have any questions?
Tammy, I have two questions, if no one else is going to jump in. My first is, obviously, this is a weird summer, and I'm grateful that we're continuing this agreement. I think that's the right way to go. But could you talk about, a little bit about how this might be different in program delivery this summer just because of COVID?
Yes. So both of our organizations have decided that we will try to offer as much programming as we can online. So one of the things that the Recreation Department is doing is they're providing camps in a box, which is kind of a fun thing, in that students who sign up, they get a delivery of materials, and then online each week, they tune in to a series of videos that shows them the things that they can do with their camp in a box. With Community Ed, some of the things that we're doing differently, all of our music lessons are online. So we've got piano lessons, and the instructor meets with the students virtually, and those seem to be working really well. In July, you'll see a lot of our classes happening. We've got a variety of art classes, some different art classes for adults, for kids, just lots of opportunities. We're really trying to work with our instructors to help them that, so that they can deliver their content online. So it's a summer where we're all trying new things. Joey and I meet regularly. We talk about things- We talk about things that are working well. One of the things that we did differently, usually we published a brochure together, um, which cost us on average about $2,000. We did not publish our summer brochure because we thought there's so many unknowns. We, uh, instead of going through a publishing company, we just ran off copies here in the district and then those copies went out with the food delivery that, um, occurred before school ended. So hopefully we were able to get our message out. We're also using, um, Facebook as a means to advertise classes and then just sending emails to families as well.
Great. Thank you. Uh, my second, well, does anyone else have a question? All right. Hearing, hearing none. My second question is, uh, this looks like this is a fiscal year agreement. Um, and I, I run some fiscal year agreements for, um, for my day job. And one of the things that I wanted to maybe just, uh, put out there and, and we can discuss it if we want to. Um, I think this is a great program. We're obviously approving a, a lease for a year or a, a, an agreement, uh, memorandum of understanding for a year. I expect this to continue into the future. Um, I'm not suggesting that we change it. Um, but for a program that, um, has a lot of summer components to it, uh, to have the agreement end on June 30th is, I think, could be problematic if we ever got to a point where we did want to, uh, end an agreement. Um, because it's hard to plan for programs for the next summer if you don't know if there's going to be a continuing agreement. So it, I don't know, Dr. Olson, uh, if the district could consider a different timing for this and maybe at some point next year, look at an 18-month, uh, agreement. And that's something that we can take up with, uh, Superintendent Grandseth, I'm sure. But I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah. And I, I think that's, that's always a possibility and Tammy helped me out if I am, am off here. But, um, one of the differences here is that the funding is funding the school district receives in our fiscal year. And so that's why it's tied to a fiscal year that's a school district fiscal year. So we would potentially be committing funding that in, you know, it hasn't happened, but I suppose it's a possibility that we would not get funds. Uh, and so we would be off in terms of needing to take those funds out of either, uh, Community Education General Fund oh-four or out of the General Fund oh-one. Um, is that accurate, Tammy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes total sense. Um, you know, we might be in that position anyway if we want, if we didn't get funding and we wanted to continue it because our funding ran out midsummer, but.
Yep.
Well, if there's no other preliminary discussion, if someone would make a, a motion to accept the MOU?
Tracy, Stewie, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Vicki, Hager, second it.
Excellent. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. I, I think we went, uh, John first last time. So we'll go Drew first this time.
Dixon, aye.
Thank you. Tim?
Locan Skard, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Vicki?
Ager, aye.
Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
John?
John Carlson, aye.
Ben Leonard, aye. Uh, memorandum, uh, carries unanimously. All right. Item number five, consider approval of breakfast and lunches for 2020-2021 school year.
Uh, did we miss four? Ben, memorandum of understanding with St. Peter Education Association?
We did. My, my mistake. We had two memorandums and I circled that one as done. So, uh, we will, uh, tackle number four. Consider approval of memorandum of understanding with St. Peter Education Association regarding concurrent enrollment certification.
So I, I know that, that, that a number of the board members who have been involved in contract negotiations as you have, uh, put in incentives in to pay for concurrent enrollment, uh, certification credits. Uh, that's in place. Um, really, as, as just a reminder, in order to continue to teach a concurrent enrollment course, a teacher either has to have a master's in that subject field. So for an example, they're teaching, uh, concurrent enrollment calculus. They have, have, have to have a master's in mathematics. Uh, or they have to have 18 credits in a subject, graduate credits in a subject field beyond their masters. Uh, and concurrent enrollment has been, um, a very popular program, uh, in the St. Peter High School. Uh, I'm not sure, Mrs. Engeldinger, exactly how many credits, 30 plus that a student could, uh, come out of high school with, uh, college credits. Is that accurate?
Yeah, it's well into the, um, upper thirties now for next year because we're adding, also adding, um, a health course, uh, in that department and a art class as well as a music appreciation class. So I haven't added it all up, but we're pushing 40 on that.
Yeah. So that's really, really a good thing for our, uh, our parents and our students. Um, but the requirement, uh, I think goes into effect in like 2022. So, uh, in some cases we're up against the, the wall in terms of incentivizing teachers to get those concurrent enrollment credit, graduate credits they need to get. For most of our teachers, they're able to use the 18 credits to make almost two lane changes. Now, if you recall, one lane change is in, in the neighborhood of about $3,200 or $3,300 a year, something like that. And that's ongoing. They, they, that compensation for having those credits, uh, for as long as they are employed. There are some teachers, uh, who are teaching concurrent enrollment courses. We have a couple who are, um, at the very top and cannot have any more lane changes. So working with the Teachers Association, this memorandum of understanding was proposed to pay teachers who are an MA 40 and can't make a lane change, $400 per graduate credit. So they complete the 18 credits, it's $7,200, but it's a one-time payment. So, uh, unlike teachers who use those credits for a lane change, they're getting a one-time payment for those credits. Um, there also is a provision then in the memorandum of understanding that the teacher who takes those credits and receives the $400 per credit stipend, uh, stays with and teaches in the district for five years. Uh, if they fail to teach in the district for five years, they pay back a prorated portion of, of the $400 per credit or maximum of $7,200 that they would receive for this program. So it seems like it's a program that, that provides some, uh, equity or consistency in, in, uh, compensating people who get credits, um, for both those who are making lane changes and those who are at the MA 40, top of the scale. Uh, so I would recommend your approval of that memorandum of understanding. But both Mrs. Engeldinger and I would stand for any questions you might have.
Excellent. Thank you. Any initial, uh, questions or discussion? Hearing none, uh, do we have a, a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
This is Locan Skard. I, I move that we approve the memo of understanding with the St. Peter Education Association.
I'll mix it up. I'll make a second. Leonard, seconds. Uh, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, John?
John Carlson, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy, Stewie, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Vicki?
Ager, aye.
Tim?
Locan Skard, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Leonard, aye. Uh, MOU passes unanimously. Now we can get to my, uh, favorite agenda item, which is number five. Uh, consider approval of breakfast and lunch prices for 2020-2021 school year.
I'm turning that over to business manager Locan Skard, or business manager Regner, excuse me.
It's everybody's favorite agenda item for the year. Um, especially this year, it's, um, actually a little better news, um, hopefully. Um, as you know, every year, because it's a federal program, we're required to take a look at our federal lunch price to make sure that we're basically charging enough on that. Um, and then they, you do some calculations and it calculates out what you should charge. Um, this year we did the calculation and it, it said we probably should raise it about a nickel on the lunch prices. But there's also something this year that said if you have a zero or positive fund balance in your food service fund, that you can choose to not raise it this year. Um, and as we discussed earlier, we have a fairly healthy balance, fund balance in the food service of about $300,000. So basically we kind of talked about this and we talked to the finance committee. Our recommendation is with, with everything that going on this year to leave the lunch prices the same in 2020-21 as they were in 1920. Um, instead of raising the nickel to leave like, say the, the K4 lunch at 290 instead of raising it to 295 and, and down the line on the, the sheets that you have in front of you. So, um, I guess that's what the recommendation is to, to leave the prices the same for the coming year. And then we can get it out there, um, on the website and everything, what the lunch prices are and into the, the federal government and things. So, um, stand for any questions, but that's what we, we, I guess we're recommending for this year, um, with where we're at with the fund balance in food.
Thank you, Tim. This was another, uh, item that came before the finance committee meeting last week. Uh, and we approved forwarding it to the full board as well. Any initial conversation?
Tim, this is John Carlson. Uh, I have a question about, uh, where, where are we? I didn't quite follow how the, the remainder of the year was paid for. I think you said the government reimbursing us, but where are we with, uh, breakfast, lunch debt? Uh, do we, is that a thing? How bad is it?
We, we do have a considerable amount. Um, we did slow down the collection of them, you know, in the middle of March, um, due to, to the pandemic and things. And we started back up sending out notices earlier. Um, probably the, right before the school started because we wanted to send out notices to some of the, the senior class if they had debt. Um, we do have an amount there. You know, it's a, it's, um, you know, it's kind of a catch 22. We, we serve all the kids and we don't want to shame any of those. And then the, um, you know, we try and collect as good as we can. You know, we do have a procedure in place to go to a collection agency, which we have not, not implemented yet with anybody. There was some talk that they were gonna pass some legislation that you could not do that anymore. Um, that did not, I did not see that that got through the, the House or the Senate, um, this year. But that, that, that's a possibility there. I know every meeting I go to, it's a big, a topic when they get into food service lunch debt, that there is a lot of that out there. Um, the, going back to your, your initial question there, like after March 15th, when we went to the summer feed, summer reading feed program, basically, then all the meals are paid for with the government, even the ones that would have, should have, or would have been normally paid, um, that weren't on free and reduced. So that actually the last two months, we did not have any, uh, uncollected bills or whatever. But it stayed the same. We're trying to work that down, but it, it's a process.
Tim, is this, yeah, thank you. Is this something that we should, um, retain, uh, board and district flexibility on so that we can decide when we do this? Or do, do some districts implement a schedule where obviously if, if a kid graduates, uh, the likelihood of collecting from that kid probably goes to near zero? And, you know, we could just every few years based on that, um, assume the debt won't be paid and get it off the books.
Yeah. And that's what, uh, you know, I guess we always tried to look at doing. And I think until this year, we'd always done a, got most of the, the seniors to pay and, and that can maybe help me out a little bit with that. They had, they'd talked with them. This year was obviously a different, different situation and I haven't looked where we, we ended up on that. But yeah, that, that's, and then if you go back, that, I, I agree on that a hundred percent. And if you go back to the, um, the budget, that $15,000 in there is kind of something that maybe we want to look at doing on a annual basis to transfer over for uncollectible debt. You know, and that was, that's just an estimate number. You know, some years it might be more, some years it might be less. But that was kind of a number that I looked at to start with anyhow to, um, you know, some of them we probably need to start cleaning it up and go from there.
Ju- just as another FYI, uh, when you take a look at your, uh, your chapter four policy, uh, book, uh, which, uh, was reviewed by the policy committee and is coming forward for a first reading, you'll find it on 4.11, unpaid meal, unpaid student meal charges. And the, the policy committee took a look at that as well.
I think that was something that was put in place probably a year, probably a couple of years ago now already because, um, there came out, the rules and regulations came out, they had to have some pay policy because a lot of districts did not have one, or if they did have it, they weren't implementing it. Um, equally, I guess, in this way, at least everybody is treated the same as they should be.
On, on the front end of things, we, we have since, uh, last fall, put some pieces in place to help, um, kind of preempt that. Getting free and reduced lunch applications mailed out to all families, reminding families that even though they qualify in maybe the 18, 19 school year, they still need to complete those new applications by October of the next school year. Um, with Ophi and Mariposa's help, we've been able to, to get more families, um, qualifying. And so we know that for many families, uh, financial situations may have changed over the course of, um, the pandemic. And so we have a plan in place to get those applications out, um, July 1st or soon thereafter, as soon as they're available to be completed. So we're on the proactive end. Uh, we've got a plan in place as well because that's certainly easier on the front end than to try to, um, collect when people are, um, enduring financial hardship on the back end.
And there's so many other things that the free and reduced application percentage really helps you financially with, um, besides, you know, obviously a nice, a nice program, but it does help the school district in a lot of other ways also.
So there's compensatory funding that's tied to that. There's Title I funding that's tied to that. And then of course our summer, um, food program based on, or is based on that, those, that data as well. So, um, and there may be more. Those are the ones that are, that are at the top of my head.
Yeah. E-rate and then also some athletic classifications and all type of things too. Um, we try to really push it and like, and you keep mentioning with the, with the, um, Ophi and Mariposa's really helped. And then, uh, but we, we really try and get those out in everybody's hand and just encourage them to do it because it is a, it is a very good program.
Thank you. Any, uh, further initial discussion? Anyone wish to make a motion?
I move that we, uh, accept the recommendation of maintaining the breakfast and lunch prices for the 2020-21 school year.
And Tracy will second it.
Thank you, John and Tracy. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, uh, we will do a roll call vote. Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Tim?
Locan Skard, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Vicki?
Hager, aye.
Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
John?
John Carlson, aye.
Uh, Ben Leonard, aye. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Item number six, uh, consider approval of changes to the 2020-2021 mobile device handbook.
Chris?
Uh, yes, we kind of moved this up this year. Uh, typically the mobile device handbook will go to the board the same time that the high school and middle school and other building handbooks do in August. Uh, but this year we're looking to turn around some devices and hand them out to students, uh, in the coming weeks for summer school. And so, uh, just didn't want to have to have them sign the old agreement and then the new one as well. Uh, we, we went through the agreement, uh, very closely, uh, in order to, uh, make it apply broadly across all grades from the early childhood all the way through 12th grade, uh, to reflect the fact that not all students are. students are getting the same devices, iPads in grades, early childhood through four, Chromebooks in five, eight, and then iPads again in nine, 12. And to better reflect how they are used in a if they're in a classroom set, if they are in a hybrid model where they're taken home occasionally or when they're in a distance learning or the typical situation that we have in a high school where students are able to take them home every day compared compared ours versus a couple of other model policies and just kind of updated the language and to better reflect what we were actually doing. And then added a piece for families if their student is taking a device home each day that they would be able to opt into a yearly maintenance plan where typically if a device is broken, we charge them a cost, basically cost of what the damage is, but sometimes it can get expensive because we do most of the repairs in-house. But this would further reduce the cost for families and it would be $25 upfront at the beginning of the year. We would provide the coverage for all of our students automatically that qualify for free and reduced lunch. And then if families were to opt into this, it would reduce the the cost of repairs in the event that students are taking devices home. We've had really good luck with the devices, you know, typically we send 700 or so devices home with all of our high school students during the distance learning period. We had almost 2,000 devices sent home to families and of those, we've gotten back all but a handful of them. And the principals and the buildings are working hard to get the rest of the devices in and we we didn't see any abnormal amount of damage. Usually we seen see between four to 5% of the devices that are sent home have to do some sort of a repair, usually a cracked screen at some point during the year, and we didn't see an increase. In fact, the percent was even just a little less than what it typically is. And so we were very happy with how the program went when we sent them home for distance learning as well as the condition of the devices when they were returned to the school. And so passing this now will allow us to update the website and get our our agreements all posted and ready to go. So when we start to send devices home, for sure for the for the high school students and then depending on what instruction looks like in the fall for the rest of our students as well.
Thank you, Chris. Some initial questions or discussion?
I have a question. So the so help me understand. So the the device maintenance plan, so people, anybody can opt into it for $25, but for people on free and reduced lunch, they are automatically in it and they don't pay the $25? Or is that is that how it is reading?
Yep, that's correct. That's what it's meant. And if that language isn't clear, I can clean that up.
Yeah, I just I was just to like, I wasn't sure if like that only people who got free and reduced lunch got to opt in for $25 or if that I just wasn't sure. Maybe I was just maybe I'm too tired, so.
No, yes, it's it's intended to be no cost for those families and then $25 for everybody else.
And then they don't so then if their kid smashes the screen, then they don't they just they don't pay anything or do they pay just part of fee or what is that mobile? What is that covering then?
Yep, the first incident of damage, unless it's intentional, would be would be covered. And then additional instances, they would have to pay the typical fee, which for a cracked screen is usually $40. So the first incident would be covered. And then other incident, you know, the first occurrence of other incidents would be covered as well. But habitually, broken devices, we, you know, we gotta, we can't, we have to encourage people to take care of them too.
Yeah.
Does the I'm sorry for not knowing this as I should, but if somebody if I take an iPad and I break it nine times, at some point, do I just not get to have that iPad?
Each we we because we don't have a ton of damage, we do kind of, you know, we're able to follow up with almost every case and we haven't gotten to that point, you know, in the time that I've been there. And yes, I would say I would work if they're habitual offenders, we would work with the building principals and the families to see just what's going on. We won't just blindly keep reissuing devices.
Is that in the policy or not currently?
That specifically is not in the policy. But there are, there is language in there that would allow us to, especially if it's intentionally damaged, not reissue a device.
Okay, great, thank you.
And so a little bit more about that too, because right now we just pretty much have those devices going home with like high schoolers, but I'm not sure with distance learning, they're probably going home to younger kiddos and just, you know, some of the younger kiddo kiddos if or emotions aren't quite in check, sometimes things like that do get broken and technically, I suppose you could say it was on purpose. So with those, I will be able to like for kids that maybe have some behavior issues or IPs, is there something that can be done? Because that would really suck, let me tell you. I mean, if I would have had an iPad come home in a younger year, I would have been pretty nervous about it. So just kind of curious if we're sending those home with those younger kids, what kind of, you know, help are we offering those families or how does that work? Or didn't anybody smash an iPad during distance learning?
So yes, that's for the most part, there were, like I say, there were, there was very little damage to the devices during the distance learning period. And so we didn't come across a case where that was. There were a couple of incidences where the student or the families admitted that the damage was was intentional and then we just work with them to understand why that happened, if it may happen again in the future and then put a plan together so that families aren't, you know, forced to take a device if their child is going to, it's gonna be detrimental to their to their child or end up causing unexpected financial bills for them. And so and we work really well with. Yeah, and the principals, the social workers, the special education staff are very good and on top of that, they let us know the situations with all of the families and we were able to work with them for that.
The the $25, are we self-insuring that or are we using, are we taking that $25 and paying like for a protection plan?
That's self-insurance. Yep, so we look at our our damage rate and then compare that with our annual cost of materials plus a reasonable cost for labor because because we do everything ourselves when it comes to repairs.
If we magically did end up with a positive, what where does that where does that money go? Does it get rolled over to the next year or?
We would, I would have to, Tim would have to let you know what happened with that. But if we do end up collecting more than we utilize, we would certainly look at lowering the fees in future years if nothing else.
I guess I hadn't really thought about that a whole lot, but what we could do is, you know, sign it and carry it over, you know, just like we were talking about like with the dental insurance, you know, if it's a large amount, say we got a couple thousand bucks carried over and then you can look at the rate going forward, I guess, type deal.
That's exactly what I was what was going to say, Tim, is, you know, our dental self-insurance plan is a great example. And we're pretty, we can adjust rates if if there was a major fund balance going forward.
Thank you. Have I exhausted all of the initial discussion or do you have a question, John?
I have one. I just, it's interesting, what would be, would it be accidental if I'm taking a big test and my internet goes out during the middle of the test and I accidentally throw my iPad across the room?
It's real, it happens.
I know.
It does, it does happen. And in those cases, you know, those cases are a good opportunity for everybody, principals, deans, if they're special education case managers, to have a conversation about why that happened. And then typically, we that would be considered, we would investigate, but based on those, that circumstance, it would be an intentional damage just because we do expect students to understand that these are expected devices and yes, you're angry, but but there's a there's that would not be a a proper reaction, you know, taking into account the student situation. But and so it probably wouldn't apply in that case. But again, we work with families and we don't want these devices to be a financial hardship for them and and do the best we can to accommodate everybody where they're at.
I mean, Ben Folds got a song out of it, so. Anyone want to make a motion? Everyone's too busy Googling who Ben Folds is.
Tracy Stewie, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Dixon, second.
Excellent, we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call. Vote, John?
John Carlson, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Vicky?
Hager, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderlund, aye.
Tim?
Locan Skard, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Leonard, aye. Motion approved. Moving on to number seven, consider approval of service provider agreement with Tri-City United Public Schools for Health Science Academy teacher.
This item has gone before the board in terms of the plan for our our Health Science Academy and in terms of how the plan works to our advantage economically. But we wanted to have the formal agreement out in front of you so when we the teacher for the program is finalized, we can put the name in and the amount of pay in and get Tri-City United to sign the dotted line and they they're on board with it. And and that maybe I'll just turn it over to you to give some details behind kind of where we're at with the whole process here.
Yeah, we are, we have a, we have a teacher lined up that we just, we need to get through the hiring process, a complete hiring process with and and we're really excited to be partnering with TCU on this. Like, like we said at the last meeting where it was approved, we just had a huge spike in interest in kids signing up for those high step courses that we were really excited about and excited to offer it, offer it with our own teacher.
It's a pretty standard agreement. We've used this kind of agreement on other opportunities to share or to basically contract for teaching, providing teaching services to other districts. We've done that with Lisa Henderson in the past. We've done that with the Niklet Public Schools in the past. So it's again, pretty standard service provider agreement.
Thank you. Any initial questions or discussion?
Dixon, I move the approval of the service provider agreement 2021 with TCU Health Science Academy teacher.
Hager, I'll second it.
Excellent, we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Tim?
Locan Skard, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderlund, aye.
Vicky?
Hager, aye.
Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
John?
Aye, John Carlson.
Ben Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Yeah, thank you. Item number eight, consider approval of hybrid instructional support plan.
So as as you're well aware, there are three different kinds of scenarios that seem to be out there in terms of what schools will be entering into in this coming fall. One would be a system that would have more or less traditional instruction but following public health guidelines. A second would be distance learning, which would be the similar to what we did the last 10 weeks. And a third would be a hybrid instructional model, which would be a combination of the two. And exactly what that looks like in specifics and all of the logistics remains to be seen. But we really believe that it's important to develop a training plan for the hybrid model and for enhancing distance learning if either of those models are in place, to pilot that training plan with summer school teachers and then to have coaches, teachers that can support other teachers in that plan should it go into effect in the fall. So in the hybrid instructional support plan, there are three elements to that. The first would be identifying a lead hybrid learning coach. They would be charged with developing hybrid training plan for staff and paraprofessionals and for working with those staff and paraprofessionals, teachers and paraprofessionals to make that happen. The coach would be a K-12 teacher with actually, we say halftime, but it's really a third of their teaching time as a release. The class would be some extended days and then a replacement for that one-third teaching time. In addition to that, there would be the train, the trainer model. We are actually in the process of finalizing plans for that model. The training is going to occur between June 23rd and 25th and the training will be a combination of in-person and online training. And then to have the training staff, about five of those teachers, train summer school teachers and paraprofessionals in what a hybrid teaching model would look like. So you can see those those total costs of about slightly over $50,000. Those costs are allowed under the CARES Act that we referred to earlier. So, you know, should this plan be approved, there is a funding source from the the CARES $284,000 allocated to the school district. But this is a whole new, whole new ballgame in terms of what this might look like. So I think it's really important to have that team of 20 teachers trained to have an opportunity to try out the training model that they believe that would want to move forward with, modify and adjust as needed so that when the return to school plan is announced by the Minnesota Department of Education in late July, we're ready to roll with it or you're ready to roll with it. There also would likely then be some possible additional teacher and paraprofessional training in August beyond what normally is in place. So we ran this by the return to school committee of the school board last week. They recommend your approval and I recommend your approval of that plan. We would all, principals, et cetera, and myself be ready to stand for any questions you might have.
I'd like to ask a question. Dr. Olson, will you give an example of what kind of a teaching or or experience you're you're planning to have come as a result of this program?
So one of the things that is going to be important is to have, you know, our staff all ready to deliver a teaching model where you would have half of your students in front of you and half of your students in an online format at the same time. And you're providing your content in a variety of different ways, both online and in person. And maybe that in-person instruction is, it has to be delivered differently because of social, the number of students who might be able to be in any one classroom at any point in time or the number of students in a building at any point in time. So some of the 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 teaching would be similar to what occurred this past spring, but we're trying to take the best of what our teachers were able to deliver and build on that in the training model. And some of it is, so how do you do that and still have students in front of you and not fall behind in terms of the content that you're you're trying to deliver to all students and and finding ways to assess their progress in the in getting that content in as both of those systems are going simultaneously? So you, principals, you want to jump in and and talk about maybe what some specific kinds of instruction might be? So you, principals, you want to jump in and, and talk about maybe what some specific kinds of instruction might be?
Darren?
Yeah, it's basically, um, you know, a lot of, a lot of you have heard the terms of kind of a flipped, um, classroom where you try to maximize the amount of direct service minutes you provide to students. So if the structure of the class or the allowance of students in front of us is only to be at half capacity with students in the room, um, then you still want to take advantage of students that are remote or distance learning on that day. So it'd be creation of content or sharing of information of your standards. Um, through videos, through posts, through padlets, uh, like bulletin boards of information that students at home can interact with without kind of direct assistance by the teacher. And then you reserve, you know, that very valuable in-person time to administer assessments, intervene, um, do kind of exit cards and things like that where students are, you know, expected to perform and demonstrate their knowledge in front of you. And then just kind of consume content when they're away from you. So it's just kind of manage, like, how do you manage that? Um, you know, and then that's what that training is going to focus on. And then that, uh, would allow, uh, for example, like our summer school teachers to kind of test that out. Um, after our hits team, um, kind of identifies that framework and what works well. Um, and then applies it to the summer so that we can make any final tweaks prior to, um, the fall starting.
I think one other area that we need to look at too is just, um, training teachers on that social emotional aspect. When kids come back now, especially when we look at some of our young learners and the early childhood center in itself, when maybe they haven't been at school. So what does it look like to get a teacher of students who really have not developed that relationship with yet?
Yeah. So that's a great point. This is Alki. One of, uh, one of the modules, one of the training modules is how do you uh, create routines and structure and positive climate, uh, in any of those models? Uh, and again, when you're not having the students in front of you on a daily basis perhaps.
Dr. Olson, um, so you mentioned that, uh, the state is going to come out with their plan in late July. Um, and I would assume that would be sort of like it was, uh, the spring where the state said, here's what's going to happen and districts have X amount of time to plan for it. Obviously. It's a good thing that we start planning now, but when can St. Peter, uh, district parents uh, look to having a firm idea of what the school year will look like?
With what we know right now, that would be likely the very end of July, uh, up to potentially August 1st. But I, I think, I think part of the, the challenge for the Department of Education is to try to make sure that they have the, the best data available about what's happening with the pandemic and what's happening with social distancing and what's happening with health guidelines before they make that, that decision. There also will be, and I just saw this, uh, this just came out late this afternoon. An opportunity for, uh, parents and families to take a survey, a state survey. And we'll need to put that, uh, on our website, uh, prior to June 30th. That will provide input from the, uh, from the families and kids about how distance learning went, about what worked, what didn't work, what got in the way, what would need to be addressed. And we've certainly done that internally, but this would be a statewide survey.
Dr. Olson, I have a question about that too. So, cause I saw something actually on Facebook today that the Minnesota Department of Ed posted. Is that the survey you're talking about or is this something different?
I think that I didn't, I didn't see that any Facebook, but I, I'm guessing it's the same thing.
Yeah, I just, I took it and it was just asking me like, you know, you know, I don't know, the simple things, what went well, what didn't. It was pretty basic. And then it asked just for my zip code at the end. So.
Yeah.
Is that sound, okay.
That sounds right. Yep.
I, I put the link to the Minnesota Department of Education, uh, survey in the chat box. I don't know if that gets recorded, uh, for these meetings or how that is, but I encourage everybody to go to the Minnesota of Education, uh, website and take that survey.
And we'll put it, we'll put this information out, you know, uh, to, to parents and guardians as well. Um, via both our, uh, our posts, our emails and on the website and on our social media.
And then this is Tracy again. And then are we going to do a separate survey? Um, is that going to come out later where we kind of acts, asks the families like, hey, if we have this distance learning again, are you going to do that or homeschool your kids or are we going to do that a little later on or?
That's part of our return to school, uh, planning that, um, that will, will ask those questions. And, and quite frankly, we're also going to need to ask the questions of our staff. Are there, are there any staff that have any underlying conditions or situations that would lead them to perhaps not be able to come back to school in an in-person format? Uh, so really trying to get some of that data in front of us. So that's a great question.
Excellent. Thank you. Any, uh, any more initial discussion? Do we have a, a motion?
Still moved.
Excellent.
Locan Skerritt, second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the hybrid instructional support plan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, we'll do a roll call. John?
John Carlson, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Vicki?
Hager, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Tim?
Locan Skerritt, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Leonard, aye. Uh, motion carries unanimously. That is the end of our action items. Uh, we move on, uh, to information item number one, uh, which is the first reading of, uh, chapter four, business management, uh, 5.21, uh, and 5.22.
So we were cooking along with the policy review committee in January, February, and the first part of March. And then, um, you know, as we're all aware, things changed pretty dramatically. So we got back to the, uh, to the activity of looking at and finalizing our review of, uh, 004 Business Management. And then policies 005.21 Recruitment and 005.22 Evaluation. There's a memo in your packet that outlines the changes, uh, the policy in chapter four, the numbering system was awkward. So the recommendation is to renumber the chapter four. And then you can, uh, on your own, take a look at each of those areas where there are suggested changes. Policies 5.21 and 5.22 have a number of suggested changes in terms of the titling of the policies. And in addition, uh, some other verbiage and wording changes. Uh, if you, when you look at those policies, if you have a color monitor, uh, anything in blue is a delete and anything in yellow is an, is a new addition. So typically what's happened is the first reading, uh, occurs. Anybody has any specific questions or comments from the policy review committee, uh, they're able to make those. And then if there are, uh, questions or concerns about any of the proposed policies in, after the first reading, and those are provided to policy review committee members or the superintendent. Uh, and then those, uh, suggestions or concerns are, uh, reviewed at a policy review committee. And then once those are addressed, the policy would, policies would come back for a final reading. In this case, the, the proposal is at the July 20th school board meeting. So anything policy review committee members want to add into that?
No, I think you said it really well.
Any, any initial thoughts or questions, or if not, we'll move those to the policy committee or the superintendent prior to the next policy review committee meeting.
Just a reminder that the next policy review committee meeting is July 16th. Um, and I, I don't think Dr. Olson will be at that, uh, that meeting. So if you do have questions on the policy, it might be good to get those to the policy committee, um, this month. So. And if you have, uh, any, uh, beyond just minor, uh, typos or minor clarifications, uh, you can get those to me as well. So we can manage that in the transition. All right. Can we move on to information item number two?
Yeah. Information item number two is an update on curriculum improvement plans. Uh, one of the things that, that we've discovered is we pulled back or pulled together, I should say, our curriculum review teams in the area of career and technical education, physical education and the co-curricula program, uh, the first week after the school year. And as we started to work with those groups, it became pretty important or pretty apparent, excuse me, that we needed to put a pause, uh, on that process and continue some of that work over the next couple of months prior to bringing things back through our normal channels. Uh, so the groups worked on finalizing recommendations in their areas, finalizing their improvement plans, finalizing their action plans for moving forward. But there still remains to be work to be done. I, I think it would be fair to say that, that members of the, those study committees and the principals and myself did not feel comfortable moving forward with those plans. It felt hasty to move forward with them in June. So there still needs to be some fine tuning, uh, presenting the plans to the instructional improvement committee of the school board. And then having the final recommendations and plans approved by the school board, uh, probably on August 17th. So, um, principals, feel free to, to chime in, but I think, uh, we felt that that was important in order to have the best product, the best improvement plans, the best action plans possible. We needed to basically take some more time. So that's, that's where that process is at, at this point.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions on that? All right. We'll move on to, uh, principal reports then.
All right. Because it's been just such a short time since we were together last, we decided that we'll take turns just kind of telling you the things that we've been working on. Um, a lot of it has already been covered. The back to school planning, it's taken a lot of our time, along with the curriculum review, took a couple of days. But one other, um, thing that we were all involved in was last Wednesday. Uh, we had, we gathered, um, the, the building leadership teams from each site. Met with the building principals, the ELL teachers and the instructional coaches. And it really was a chance for us to take a look at equity and the things that we have learned. Um, it was, the timing was, was great just because we know that no matter what's going on in our school world, um, this, this, uh, lesson of diversity and some, and how do we make sure that we are doing the right things for the students that we have with us and, and teaching that, and creating that self-awareness for ourselves. So each one of us, um, initially we were supposed to be attending an equity, um, conference over in Washtika. That was on the ninth, and then this was going to be our follow-up. So we were not able to do that, but we were able to review some of the data. We looked at behavioral data, attendance data, um, grades. And we were able to break that down, um, in several, um, subgroups and take a look at that information and see what, what, what we are noticing within our district. We also reviewed information from our equity watch, the watch that happened in February in our district. And then our teams came together and based on the information that we had, we kind of developed a site plan. Uh, what were the areas that we feel we need to move forward with? Um, we also talked about what some of the district plans are. And our very first thing, um, I think that everyone has participated in, uh, on the admin team. And we are advocating and putting it in place for the entire district is something that we're collaborating with, um, with the Maine Diversity Council. They have put a plan together called Life's Journey and it's a really thorough look at, um, implicit biases that we may have and really just starting with ourselves and trying to understand what racism is, um, what it looks like and how do we, how do we help, um, confront it here within our schools? So that is definitely a direction that our district will be taking, um, in the fall. That's one of those things that, um, the admin team has started that process. The pandemic really has kind of slowed some of it down, but we have been talking about completing that journey. So that by the time we come back in the fall, um, we've done enough of it that we know that it's a good, solid program. Um, we will be then having all of our licensed staff participate in that. We also met for the last hour of that time together and we listened to all of the sites, um, ideas. And then we did a nominal rating of the areas that we need to be focusing on for next year. And that is pretty much everything we've been working on in the last couple of weeks. Questions?
Anybody have any exciting, uh, plans for some well-deserved time off or you're just going to not be in Google Hangouts?
I'm doing a review of schools of excellence tomorrow for MSBUC. So that's, um, just been my first day of vacation is, um, reviewing applications. So, but it's always an interesting process.
Yeah, one day please. That's, that's too much already, but you do your free time.
Well, my 16-year-old felt like, uh, taking the railing off the deck today. So I guess I'll be reinstalling that over this week.
Oh.
Was it taking a test and it happened accidentally or?
No, it, no, it needed replacing. It's Sophia and she, uh, she took whole railing down today among some other things. So. She needs something to do and she found something.
I guess you weren't taking the hints, Mr. Doherty.
I was not. So I have a problem.
It'll be 90. It's lovely.
I have a general question or an informational question if I could ask please.
Yeah.
Uh, the school, school board voted to modify grading criteria. And, uh, do we have any information right now on how that played out? Was there, you know, what was the pass rate where there are students that got lost in this, uh, process of distance learning? Their classes, they seem to be problematic.
I can speak to that, um, from the data that we have so far. Um, the number of kids that are requiring credit recovery, credit recovery or summer school, uh, this summer is up. Um, quite considerably over, over other years. Um, or I would say that the, and this is without referring to data. Uh, the adjusted grading scale worked for most kids. Um, kids who are struggling, uh, prior to distance learning really struggled during. So, um, while the adjusted grading scale helped many, um, there, there is still a significantly higher number of kids who require credit recovery.
I think one of the, one of the, you know, the plus, if you can think of a plus to credit recovery is that we, we do plan for, um, much of the credit recovery program in, that starts in July to be in a hybrid model. So I think that's going to be helpful to get kids in a face-to-face interaction system with teachers. to get kids in a face-to-face interaction system with teachers.
Thank you. Dr. Olson, to that point, uh, you probably know this. Mine's more anecdotal, but I think
I didn't hear that, John. Did John freeze up or did it?
I think.
I don't know. Anyways, I think it's the, from, anecdotally, I think, uh, I'm freezing up.
You were good.
Okay. I just think that, you know, I think a lot of districts had the same problems we did with, uh, higher than normal, uh, amount of students that are doing credit recovery.
Yes. That would be true in the Big South Conference schools that we meet with regularly.
Any other questions?
Well, I would just add, I know that, well, Doreen said we were gonna take turns. She was our spokesperson tonight. Um, but I, I know that I speak for, uh, all of the principals and admin team. Um, today we did, uh, a grounding activity at the beginning of our meeting, do-over and do-again. And the do-again is something that happened this year that we would, we would definitely do the same way. Uh, and, and all of us, if we, all of us would, would have chosen to have Dr. Olson back again, uh, for this year. And I, I think this is his last meeting, um, whether or not it's a Google Hangout or in-person with us like this. So, thank you. Um, I can't imagine having been led through this by anybody else or anybody better. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. That, I echo that on that. There was a reason you were here, that's for sure. Good one.
Thank you.
Well, now you get to make a speech under, uh, superintendent updates, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we, you know, we have a couple of things. So one question that, that is out there is, um, resuming committee and school board meetings in person. I included some information from the Minnesota School Board Association in your packet on page 106. Uh, and it basically says that you can do a modified in-person meeting schedule, where they recommend that you not have, uh, more than 10 people in the meeting, but that you do have to offer remote access to other folks, community members and others, or people who may not, uh, choose to attend an in-person meeting. Uh, and so, you know, we've had some experience with that. We, in some of our administrative meetings, uh, our principal meetings and so forth, we've been able to have some people present, uh, in person and some people present, uh, via technology. So, uh, those, those systems seem like they work relatively well. Uh, but that's a question that I know, um, a, a number of board members have asked about. Um, and I think that's really something that, that's up for you as a group to discuss and, and think about if that, um, that modified model makes sense or not, or something else.
Is that, uh, something that we could put on the study session slash board meeting, uh, agenda to discuss on July 20th?
My question would be, does this require a vote? Or can we just decide?
Well, you, you passed a motion to move to remote learning. Um, I think you could, I think, I think you, I think it would be good to have a vote, uh, if you were to move to this. Just, I mean, there, I suppose there's the potential of, you know, some, some health concerns or some other things, and it'd just be good, I think, to have that be something. Obviously, you could discuss it at a study session, but then take it up at a, at a meeting where you would, um, you would have the entire group make that decision.
I, I would like to just, uh, throw this out, or ask a question. Whose guidelines are we following? I mean, right now, as of the 13th of June, restaurants were able to open dine-in. Uh, you know, so I guess my concern is that we have our own policy and, and the, the state of Minnesota has a policy for restaurants. And, yeah, so I'd like to clarify, what, whose lead are we following here? Are we gonna just decide that amongst ourselves, or are we following any guidelines?
We, we, as, as we open, uh, Dr. Sol, as we open up the school for some athletic practices, uh, in person this week, we're following, uh, the Centers for Disease Control, Minnesota Department of Health, Minnesota Department of Education. They all weigh in, but there are, are some commonalities in terms of, uh, when you have in-person meetings for school personnel. Uh, and I think we'd have to go back and, and also get the Minnesota School Board Association involved. If you want to, you want to reach their guidance. This, this updated MSBA school board meeting guide, that was May 28th. Uh, things are changing all the time.
Yeah, that was gonna be my comment. It seems like it is, you know, one turn of the dial, so to speak, behind where, uh, the state is at right now with restaurants and gatherings of, you know, are, are more than 10, was it 25 now? As long as there's, as long as you're socially distanced. So I, I am, I just want to go on record and say, I, I prefer in-person meetings, socially distanced. In whatever format that that needs to be, if we need to continue to, uh, livestream it or whatever. But, uh, and I, I, the reason I brought up, do we need to vote, is it'd be nice, since we have a study session and a, uh, a board meeting right afterwards, it'd be nice if that was, that had the option of us being in person.
Well, let me, let me throw one other, uh, idea out there, and this actually was tied in with my next informational item. Um, I think it might be necessary to have a meeting, uh, in earlier than Ju- July 20th, uh, be, in, for two specific reasons. One, you're getting bids that will be coming in next week on the, uh, remodeling project that you authorized for the middle school media center. Uh, and so those bids need to be formally accepted by the school board. And so, um, waiting till July 20th would really delay the, the project and the completion of the project. Uh, there also, I think, could be a need to have a discussion about, uh, the, uh, the restroom concession stand ticket booth at Community Spirit Park, um, in, with, uh, the work that, um, our, our team has been doing, led by Mark and, and, um, and others, and working with the city, uh, to maybe provide an update on that Community Spirit Park project. They're having a hard time moving those, uh, that project within the i- initial budgeted amount. So that would allow you to have a discussion as well on what kind of school board meeting you would have. So Mark, what is that, are those bids opened on the 20, 24th or 25th? I can't remember.
Thursday, Thursday, the 25th, the bids will be open for the media center. So we'll know where that comes out. And we know right now where the numbers sit with the, um, restrooms and, and, um, concession stand. Um, but we'll have some better ideas that we can share in the next two weeks.
Could we look at a special board meeting on Monday, June 29th, uh, at 6:30? And could we look at, uh, asking, uh, Dr., uh, Bill Grandseth to attend if he is available?
Yes.
That would be great. If we need to pay out a, a daily rate for that, I think, um, we'd have to approve that at some point, but that makes sense.
I'd be agreeable with that.
And you'd have, it'd have basically, at this point, three topics. The, uh, the consideration of bids for the middle school media center. Uh, and update and discussion on the Community Spirit Park restrooms. And the, coming back to in-person meetings for the school board and what that would look like.
Yep. Could we also think about having a consent agenda for that meeting as well? Would that help the district if there were?
Could, yes.
Um, this is John Carlson. Uh, board member, Locan Skard, you might want to consider, uh, since we go to mediation for the second time with office support, that there might be a point in that meeting where we close it and, uh, and discuss where, where we're at with the rest of the board.
I think that's a great.
Okay.
Um, just one other, one other piece, um, to John and to Bill's question about what we can and can't do. Um, one of the pieces that we've put together is a weekly meeting with, to update the task force on where we're at. What can we do? What size meetings can we have? Because things are constantly changing. So we'll have the latest information that can be shared on the 29th also. Or before that, too.
So I don't have to give a speech now because I just have another, another school board meeting before I'm officially done.
Yeah, I know this isn't the graduation you anticipated, so I'm glad that we get one more, one more try. So.
All right.
Uh, just to follow up on that meeting, um, that meeting will be virtual because our, uh, existing, uh, plan is still in place, uh, but we can discuss, uh, if we want to move, uh, forward with a different, uh, a different meeting arrangement. And if there are, uh, any further, uh, guidelines, edicts, uh, information from MSBA or, and/or the state, that would be great to have, uh, in that, in that meeting. I think it's gonna be, you know, I, I read, uh, a limit to 10 people, and I think there's seven board members, and there's 19 people in this meeting. Um, I, I do think that it's better to meet in person, but meeting in person and drastically alter, altering the, uh, collaboration with administrative team members and, and, uh, allowing public access in, in person, uh, limitations on those things might prove to be, uh, less desirable than, than this format. So.
I, I would just like to say, though, uh, churches have opened up, and they're certainly not limited to 10 people. So I think it would really be worthwhile to find out what exactly the guidelines are right now and, and move forward.
Yeah, I absolutely. I absolutely agree. Um.
Yeah. So I, I was at church on Sunday, and there had been 50 or 60 people there. And, you know, everybody was social-distanced. So I don't, I don't.
The venue, the venue where you meet will also dictate how many people you can have. So for example, in the gym, you can have more people than you can in a, in, in the, uh, commons or cafeteria. The same with the theater. So there, there are options out there.
Yeah, I think we should explore all those options. What, um, what guidelines are? What, uh, different locations could offer us? Um, and, and I agree, this is, uh, confusing, uh, Dr. Soderland. I do think that, from what I've seen with state guidelines, is they're, they're trying to be safe and keep us safe and also accommodate business. So, uh, it's hard to eat in a restaurant in, in this sort of, uh, setting. It's, uh, it's harder to go to church and, and commune with people if you're not in person. Um, I, I don't know that the state feels, uh, the same, uh, about school board meetings, or if they think this is something that, that can be done in a more socially-distanced way. So I, I, I really think that that's why you end up with, um, regulations that don't appear maybe on the surface to make sense because they really are trying to accommodate daily life.
If, if the, uh, the, uh, nego, the mediation, the negotiations thing gets on, it'll be a interesting homework trick for, uh, Sarah or whoever to try to figure out how to start with an open meeting, close the meeting, and then open it up again. That'll, that'll be a fun little project.
I, I'm sure there's MSBA guidance on that. What I would suggest is, uh, a separate Google link to a closed meeting that we could click into. Um, and then that meeting be recorded per, uh, per guidelines and per Minnesota law, and then jump back into, uh, the regular one. But you're right, John, it'll be tricky. Any more, uh, Dr. Olson?
Oh, that's it. Thank you.
Great. I did hear, um, from Bill Grandseth, and he will, uh, he was planning to work that day, and he will attend the meeting. So, on the 29th.
Good.